Meeting order.
I'm gonna ask the chief if he would do, say a little prayer for us.
Just pray, Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all that you've done for each one of us. Or we thank you for this county and the citizens. Or we're especially thankful for this season that we're in, Father God. The beginning of the holiday season, Thanksgiving and Christmas. Let us never forget what the true meaning is. Now that everything that we say, that be pleasing to you, in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
I pray to Egypt, to the land of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's do a roll call. Mr. Burris. Has he yet called, is he gonna call?
I don't think he's called in yet. No, sir. He said he might not be able to call in, but he would try.
Mr. Pope. He's not here. Okay, Mr. Lucas.
Here.
Mr. Barnum.
Present.
Cheers, yeah. Okay. Do we have any guest speakers for today?
No, sir, we don't. Not signed up, not unless we have somebody in the audience.
Okay. Okay, on the agenda item, we'll move on. On A, we got a bid award for the library roof replacement. You got anything on that, anybody?
Mr. Chairman, this has been needing to be done for quite some time. There's some roofing tile that's coming off, falling, and it's in, it's in poor shape and it needs to be replaced. And we advertised for bids. We only received one, one from Brantley Roofing. Back in September, we did call to verify that the price is still good, and they said that they would still honor the price at this price of seventy-two thousand four hundred dollars.
Okay. Anybody, commission got anything on that? You got any questions?
Needs to be done, needs to be done.
Needs to be done, yes. It's been needing to be done for a few years now, I do know that, and it's been put off, and we went and put it on there. And we could, we're able to use ARPA funds.
ARPA fund, okay. All right, we'll just carry that over there. Okay. Okay, B. Beta contract for the airport. That's on electrical.
Yes, sir, this electric vehicles charging stations to be located at the airport. There's actual total of three. One is for, excuse me, one is for the airplane or aircraft, and two are for automobiles. I asked Jesse to be here if he could speak to it. There he is. Can you kind of give them a little rundown on it and how this all got started?
We were contacted about A, and they wanted to put in these charging stations because, as y'all know, the east does the way everything's going now. Presently, there are very few charging stations for the cars. This will be accessible to two of them. And also UPS, FedEx, and Amazon are actually using airplanes now. Or they're in the prototype stage of trying it out, so you have to go at work. And there's only two of these going in right now in the state of Georgia. There's one of them and a justice one of them. It's no cost to us at all. Matter of fact, we get ten percent of the profits at the end of the year. So it's kind of a win-win situation for us. We'll be ahead of everybody on the charging side. Plus, they'll bring in income for airports.
I'd like to ask you one question, too. Are we wired for that type of chargers?
Most, sir, but they are, they're gonna put all the equipment in. They're gonna invest about four hundred thousand dollars. They've been with Georgia Power and worked all that out, and that's where we stand with them. No cost to us, period.
No monthly bill, no electric bill, no nothing?
So how about future repairs on machines?
That's their responsibility also. All we have to do is just give them access to the airport.
And we'll only get ten percent of the?
Yes, sir, that's what the contract car, that's what a justice signed on for.
Ten percent and that's not doing nothing?
So if they charge seventy-five dollars to charge up a car, that's seven dollars and fifty cents, correct?
Yeah.
Will they pay for electricity?
They'll pay, they're gonna pay everything.
So they'd have their own meters out there?
Yes, they'll be paying Georgia Power.
So if they have to upgrade that electrical coming in, then they gonna do all that, too?
Yes, sir.
They're gonna take care of all that?
Yes.
Okay.
I inserted some pictures in the back of the contract and kind of give an idea of what they look like.
Jesse, have you already got a place designed to put them out there?
Yes, sir. They're gonna put the plane chargers between fuel farms and what used to be previous to this plane yard, right there. And they're actually gonna pull two slats for the car chargers, so it doesn't take any of our parking area up. And they'll have access to it.
Let me ask you, would the public be able to, if they were out there at the airport, then they could charge?
Yes, sir, that's what we're intending for, because there's actually an app. There's actually an app that you can put on your telephone. It's kind of like an app. And it tells you where the charging stations are. And what we're hoping is to pick up the quarter Z traffic in the process of doing this, because it's not that far off quarter Z.
Sounds like a win-win to me. We're gonna make money and not have to put any money into Georgia.
And once, once coming down US one, coming, you know, from traveling north and south.
They'll have a place to go?
This question don't have anything to do with this, but I got to ask, you know, if you take a regular mid-sized car, what does it cost to charge it up, I wonder?
I have no idea.
You can't find out anything?
You see it's eighteen dollars, or you might see one that says seventy-five dollars, and I think it's kind of a cost of how that works.
I had a friend of mine that had one of them high-end Teslas. He's in the army. And he had it hooked up at his house. He said he couldn't even see a difference in his light bill. It charged all night long.
And pardon, if you see those are slow chargers, these chargers here will charge you up and that's now.
Well, that's what they want, yeah.
If they're traveling, all they have to do is pull in, plug in, kill an hour and they're ready to go.
There you go. We put some vending machines out there and make money on that, too. Just thought.
All righty. Anything else? Anybody else?
I say carry it over.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jesse.
Thank you, Jesse.
Okay, we've carried that over. C. Ordinance twenty-two-two dash oh-four. Amend chapter eighteen article. Six, driveway encroachment control. For that?
Yes, sir, this, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, this is a modification, another modification to an ordinance that was modified some, some weeks ago, or actually a few months ago. And what this is, is our policy in the ordinance on how we handle driveway pipes. And through some recent events and talking amongst everybody in the county, for the staff, we're recommending that the county go back to installing driveway pipes for primary residences and also make, from the standpoint of maintaining those. That's one difference in the last version, and the other one is that we added a cost for that. And over on page three, under section eighteen dash eighty-six, cost responsibility. And I'll just read it. It says, "The applicant agrees to pay the current market price for the tight size and length of associated driveway pipe. And the applicant also agrees to pay two hundred fifty dollars for cover dirt and labor for installing the driveway pipe." So basically, whatever that pipe cost us is what will cost the resident to put it in. Yes. And then that way, we can, we can also put the pipe in, it will be put in to code, and we're able to monitor that much more easier than having a contractor do it and having to go spend a little bit more work, labor, going back into checking it out and inspecting it.
All righty.
So are the permit part of this, or we still gonna go through plan and catch, or they just go straight to the commission office?
One of the things I was gonna recommend, and I think we can handle it, is have the applicant just come to the commission office. I believe years ago, and correct me if I'm wrong, when I was here in the nineties, the applicant used to go up to the commission office, and we could do the same thing here. Take, take the money, take the payment, and issue that, and just send it straight to Public Works. Kind of cut down on the, on the logistics of everything.
Right. Okay.
So there won't be no fifty-dollar permit fee then, like it is now?
Well, the way it sits in here now, there would be a fifty-dollar administration fee.
On top of the?
On top of that, yes, sir. Yeah, because that, that basically will take care of the staff time and maintaining that and for going out and inspecting and such. The other is to pay for the dirt and the labor to have it put in and the cost of the pipe.
Okay.
I mean, but this is just proposed. I mean, it can be changed if the commission sees fit.
My opinion, people paying enough of that, getting permits like it is, I mean, we're already gonna get four hundred fifty dollars for the, roughly for a pipe, another two hundred fifty dollars for dirt and labor. I say waive the permit. That's my opinion. People, people paying too much now.
Right. We can take that out. It was, it was just proposed the way it stands now.
And this has, this has nothing to do with the ones that are deemed tore up or messed up or, you know, just wear and tear.
That'll be the county to replace.
Yeah. If it's, if it's a primary residence, yeah.
Primary residence, not business.
Yeah, primary residence, yes.
It's primary residence.
Not businesses, yeah.
Yeah.
How does the rest commission feel about the permit, do it, waive that fifty-dollar permit fee?
I agree with you.
I do. I feel like that'd be good, the way that, let, let the county do the inspection on it as he goes, when it's, when it's done. Okay.
Yeah, I think they're paying a good bit now, so.
We do it in-house. Okay, is there any more on it?
I like Steve's proposal.
Okay, we'll carry it over. All right. Ware County Employee Safety Incentive Pay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is an annual thing that Ware County's been doing for a number of years with the rebate, refund, I should say, that we're getting from our workers' comp claim insurance. This is a incentive that's given to employees, a hundred twenty-five, a hundred twenty-five dollars for full-time employees and sixty-five for part-time employees. And typically, this is paid out at the end of the year. Okay.
So where's this gonna cross the county?
Uh, I believe it's somewhere, I don't know if everybody's in here, but if I'm not mistaken, it's somewhere around forty-eight to forty-nine thousand altogether. That's what the rebate was. And then typically, that, that you'll see down there on page two. If you add those two up on the far right columns, those two columns there, I believe they come to somewhere around forty-seven thousand, so the refund will actually cover that cost.
The refund from the insurance pay?
Yes, sir. From the workers' comp. Yes, sir.
Forty-seven, sixty-nine, you break even on it. Okay.
Anything else on it? Lucas, you got anything?
No, it's gonna offset, so it don't cost us anything.
You insurance man now.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's a rebate they get.
Rebate, okay. Let's carry it over. Okay, request for approval, alcohol license application. Yeah.
Good, buddy, you wanna?
Is that on?
I don't think there's gonna be any questions.
Family Dollar?
Yes, sir, this is the one that's located across the highway there from the college.
College.
I think there's some kind of, Mr. County Manager, back in my policing days, you had to be within so many feet, you might have the numbers in your head, so many feet from selling alcoholic beverages to the actual entrance to a school.
Three hundred feet.
Three hundred?
From the line to the front door of the building that's being sold. And they're three hundred feet. And there's no taste, that's just.
Because, you know, I had a friend of mine that was gonna put one up at the old huddle house, and he was told that was too close to the college. And that's eleven hundred feet.
Well, consumption, consumption of distilled spirits is six hundred. But we have, for liquor and, and, I'm sorry, malt beverages and wine is three hundred feet. For distilled spirits is six hundred feet.
I mean, you might, you might know who I'm talking about, but it's eleven hundred and five feet from the corner of his property, the old huddle house, to the front gate, eleven hundred and five feet.
Yeah, I've not seen anything from the front gate on ours. That might have been city ordinance.
I, I think it is city ordinance.
Basically, how that works is the state says, or the state basically puts in the city and county's laps to give restrictions requirements on those. And, you know, nowadays, at sporting events, a lot of colleges are selling alcohol at sporting events.
Yeah, yeah, they are.
So.
I would, it's, it's my recommendation that we hold off on this, because, I don't know if y'all seen the news just before we got here. And then they've had a shooting at two colleges, two D-one colleges right now, that they're investigating right now in this country. And then us gonna approve an alcohol consumption placed by alcohol within walking distance of our college.
Well, the store, Save Lot, they sold beer, didn't they?
Save Ton, Save Lot sold beer, Friendly Express sells beer.
I mean, you surround it all with beverages being sold.
Friendly Express is right next door.
Yeah, yeah. And they got a big.
Well, Save Lot's in the county, and then Friendly Express is in the city, yeah. What it is, is you go from, and I don't understand the logistics on the ordinance, because I'm gonna go back and read it, because I was just reading it now. It defines, basically, in there, it defines like, for schools, it says from the building of the school, six hundred feet from the building of the school for distilled spirits. But then, when you get down to the college, it says, three hundred feet from malt, malt beverages, three hundred feet from the college campus. So then you go from line to the front door of the establishment. So that, that, to me, that's backwards.
Right.
The way it should be. For a high school or elementary school, you should be able to further do much more than college campus.
I agree.
So, and that's the things that we need to clean up in the ordinance.
This will be just.
This one, they met the requirements.
Yeah. It's just a go, ain't it? I mean, it, it ain't, ain't gonna be no drinking or nothing, it's just a go.
Right, it's just trying to sell wine and beer.
Yeah, it's gotta go.
Well, you know how some of them are.
Said old boy from California said that the top for a liquor bottle was just to keep from spilling it till you got it to the car.
Well, you know, you know those are gonna pop the cap right before they sit down and crank the car up, so.
Yeah.
Don't sell it cold, sell it hot.
Sell it hot, that way they gotta go home and cool it.
To keep the spirits. Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Any more, anything else? All right, carry it over. Appointment to the Library Board of Trustees. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ms. Tawana Harris's term expires at the end of this calendar year, December thirty-first. And she's asking to be reappointed, if at all possible. And also, too, Cassie Clemmons on the board expires at the end of this year also, but she does not want to be reappointed. And Ms. Janice Williams has expressed interest in running for that, or being appointed to that seat. And her contact information is located there on the.
Is she here? Is she here tonight?
Don't think so, no, sir. I think she works with the college, South Georgia State College.
Is she the criminal justice person?
I think so, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I know who she is.
Okay.
The only thing with this, y'all, Commissioner, Chairman, Mr. County Manager, and I believe we got to talk about it in here, and not in open session, but, I mean, executive session. But I've been reading some of their bylaws and some of their contact information for me, rising myself since I'm on their board. And they're not following their own procedures. I don't know any other way to say it. I've actually dug down into it, and as a Ware County Commission, we're supposed to have three appointees. One from the commission, and two that we appoint that agrees to, to their appointment. But we are in charge of appointing two as a commission body.
Yeah.
The city gets the same right. The city has to have one commissioner and two appointees. And to my knowledge, I'm the only one from the county. And when I talked to Mr. Henry Strickland, the city commissioner, it's him and one other person, and they never done the third person. And in my opinion, the library's taking, what's the right word to use here to stay politically correct with it?
Global approach.
Uh.
Yeah.
They're taking their own approach to take our positions that we are in charge of appointing and appointing their people. Well, according to their own bylaws, they're only to have one employee of that library on that board, and they've got three. Okay? We're supposed to have three, and we've only got one. The city's supposed to have three, and they've only got two. So me and Mr. Henry and Ms. Candace has got together, and we're, we're gonna call a meeting, a library meeting, library board meeting. We're gonna call an emergency meeting, because our next meeting until February. And we're gonna try to have some of these instances addressed. Because there is a lot going on at the library.
Can we appoint a couple of citizens and?
We're, we're supposed to, from what I understand, if I read it correctly, that we are supposed to appoint two. One of our commissioners and two from the county, and the city is to do the same. One commissioner and appoint two. I've got two people in mind and who expressed, you know, their, their concern for the future of our library. And I'm gonna get ahold of Mr. Keith Lloyd tonight and reiterate to him, see if this is a go, definitely. But I know Ms. Ramona Thrift has agreed to it, to be our other appointee, if we elect to appoint two more.
So you recommend we postpone this to the next meeting?
I recommend, well, I recommend we, well, we can't postpone this, because Ms. Cassie comes up before our next meeting, and she has requested not to be appointed again. And I know Ms. Tawana.
How many have they got onboard now? They got quorum, haven't they?
At times. When people call in, yeah.
We'll have a, we'll have a meeting first of December, and you could appoint then, if you get it cleared up, by the time, before their term ends.
Okay. As long as we can get that done, because I know Ms. Cassie has expressed not to go forward. And Ms. Tawana would like another term, and I don't see a problem with that. She's doing a good job.
Okay.
It's just some, it's the in-urch working of what's going on right now at the public library that I find they're going against the grain on. They're going against their own policies and their own bylaws. And I think it's high time that somebody hold them accountable, and that's us. We're responsible for the decisions they make based on that vicarious liability.
The only thing we can do is point the people to their board. I mean, we just can't dictate as commission for how they run it, can we?
Well, they got a, they got a better bylaw.
No. Yeah, we're not, we're not supervisory to them.
And that's why we appoint a board to execute their policies or.
Yep.
But if they're executing, they, they just revised their policy November first to twenty-one. And when they revise that policy that they just sent me, on that revised policy, they revised their likings without the proper people in place that their policy says is supposed to be in place. So how could that be?
So did their full board vote?
I wasn't there. I wasn't there. I didn't start till January. But all I know is it was revised November first, and there was nobody from the county representing at all at that time. And they only had two from the city. So if you don't have the appropriate quorum per your bylaws, how could what they've done November the first be legal and legit? It's my question. Ms. Madam Sec, Madam Lauren, can you answer that for us?
Well, certainly, I have not reviewed the library's bylaws specifically. You are correct that generally, you know, under Georgia's Open Meetings Act, a quorum is required for any action to be official. So as, whatever the quorum is defined in their bylaws. Now, the library should have their own council that would be separate, you know, from the county. And so certainly, if you all have questions and, you know, if you're on that board, I'm glad to take a look at those bylaws and, you know, just see, um, what it may say about that quorum language, just so you'll know going forward. But I think to, um, Commissioner Varner's point is that, uh, you know, the county commission has a limited role as far as what the appointments are. Now, you know, who's on that board is responsible to see that, you know, the bylaws and policies are carried out, um, who's on the library board. So that would certainly be, um, whoever the, not only the commissioner member, but the commissioner appointees, right? That's their job on that board is to see that that's carried out. But I mean, we're glad to, you know, take a look at it and answer any questions that the board has about it, certainly.
Well, it's definitely raised my eyebrow in several areas. And there, there, there's some issues, there's some problems.
Yeah, let's go over that thing.
There, there's gonna be some, hate to say it, but there's gonna be some, some future lawsuits pop up because of this thing. And I feel like we're gonna be dragged into it.
County Commission, the county commission can't be responsible for the way they're running, can they? If they got their own board, we don't see it.
We're not responsible for management of the library. Now, we'd have to look into the, you know, I don't know what funding we provide, but that still wouldn't be a supervisory responsibility.
But surely, one sitting on the board that's appointed by the county commission-
That's right, certainly has a voice. That's right, and I think that's the intent, is for the city and county to have a voice on that board.
We need to have the two appointees on there then.
We got the head. You got the head.
Yeah.
So I think what I'm hearing though is that you all would like further time to consider, you know, what appointees that will be. Both of these terms look like they do not expire until December thirty-first of this year. So we'll have one additional meeting, um, so you all have that time to consider, you know, who you would like to nominate and then vote as a board perhaps at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll just table, uh, table this one for now.
I think the county commission needs to take a closer look at some of the people that's appointed to these boards. You know, for we know what's going on. That was suited the best for the library or whoever. All right. Let's, uh, wanna table that, then, let's table it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll table the library. All right, we'll move on to Chief.
Okay, um, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, this is, uh, another appointment here for Region Five Advisory Council of the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities. Um, Ms. Lisa Gillis, uh, used to reside in another county. Now, she lives in Ware County, would like to be appointed. She was on that board and so, um, she's asking to be appointed to this seat if, if at all possible. There's a copy, uh, cover letter in the back behind the, the summer sheet and her application with some information there.
Does each county in the region have a representative that sits on that board?
Yes.
So you've got, one, two, three.
You got a, you've got quite a few.
You got, got twelve, thirteen counties in Region Five, so there's that many people sits on the board?
Uh, if I'm not mistaken, there's more, if you'll turn to the last page, that shows what Region Five is, it's huge.
Yes.
The whole southeast Georgia and some of middle Georgia. I say middle Georgia, but. And all the way to the coast. Quite a few.
So what, Karen, does she live in, what?
She lives in Ware now.
She lives in Ware now.
She, yeah, I believe she was in Brantley, I'm not sure, but, um, but now she resides in Ware County.
Do you know her?
I think I know who it is, uh, from many, many, many years ago. And I'm trying to think, um, I think originally from Ware County.
Originally from Ware County?
Yes, sir.
Looks like she's a special education teacher. She's a parental mentor partnership, American League Board Member, left mega transition alliance board member. She's got the qualification, so we put her on there.
Got my book. Okay.
And the, uh, the, the, not the board, but the, the agency is requ- uh, requesting and recommending that she be appointed. So evidently, she's, uh, she's a good board member.
Okay.
Y'all got anything else, I mean?
She's carried over.
I don't see nothing wrong with it. Do you know her? You know her, Timmy?
I don't.
Scott, you say you think you know her?
I'm not sure if that's her or not.
I wonder if we could, uh, meet when she comes?
When I was, when I was a young man, way back then.
Yeah.
Through the, through all the Gillises, I don't know if that's her or not. Same name.
I like to put my eyes on a mule before I really buy anything, you know? I think we, uh, if she would come by and we'd speak with us.
Certainly. Yeah, I'll, I'll see if she can, uh, come, if you want to, we can postpone this until December two, if you don't do that.
If she will come by.
Yeah.
Get her to come by and let us meet.
Get a chance, yes.
Meet with us, okay.
We won't be too hard on interview.
Nice. Okay. We'll carry that over. All right, commission items. We got the light at the high school worked out.
Okay.
If he brought up the light, I had wrote it down.
Assistant County Manager gonna handle that?
He got it, Brandon's going.
Brandon gonna handle?
Handle it, yeah. Uh, he said he can handle it. We had a list of some roads that we wanted to look at. And, uh,
I got that list right there.
Change order with, uh, little field when we go to the meeting, like we ought to look at, what we bring, we carried over to the meeting.
Okay.
On the, on doing a change order. I had talked to Scott about it and he said we could do it. You know, if we, we-
We'll carry that over.
So we'll carry it over to you. Is any more items for the commission? Okay. If not, County Manager got anything?
Um, no, sir, not write-off. There was something I was gonna mention and it's, I did not write it down, but I thought about it during the meeting. And if I think of it, I'll mention it at the regular meeting.
Okay. We'll be back here.
Uh, I got one thing.
Okay.
Mr. Brook?
Yes, sir.
Did you ever found out anymore about the, uh, machine that we talked about earlier?
No, sir, still waiting on some information on that.
How about sit up and explain what's going on with the mulching doing?
While he's on the way up here, I would like to say I appreciate Mr. Brooks. I got ahold of him a couple of weeks ago and, uh, expressed some of my concerns with some of the canals and stuff like that. And he was, him and, him and Mr. Assistant County Manager back there, Mr. Brandon was on board with it. And I rode by a couple of them today and they are done. And look really, really good, so I appreciate that, Mr. Mike, Mr. Brandon.
Uh, just touching on what Commissioner Varner was speaking of, um, he's asked me to look into, um, we've had a contractor doing that work. Um, as far as using a mid-size excavator with a mulch in it on it to go in these canals. And, uh, as you can see, it goes rather quickly. Um, so Commissioner Varner asked me to look into the possibility of us buying one, purchasing one. So I'm, I'm researching out, reaching out to the, to the comp, uh, to the vendors and see what kind of price that we can get and hopefully bring that back to you next, in the next inspection.
Do we know if Cat out there on that avenue carries that kind of equipment?
They do. Um, and like I said, we're, I'm still waiting on, on the price that I can bring back to you.
Okay.
It'd be a state contract price.
This machine they's talking about, it'd be the ideal thing, going down these roads, over the roads, trying to take over, over the top of the highway. Got what, a twenty-foot reach on it that we're talking about?
Yes, sir.
That's how much more further than the mulch trim we got?
Mulch, mulch trim reach about sixteen feet. So you get another four, five foot. They don't have push saw, but you could get down in the ditch with the best blade where you can.
And it will have rubber tracks on it, so it's steel tracks across the highway, you, you cross the highway without having to, rather have to load it back up across the highway.
Yes, sir.
I like it.
And how much hour a day did he charge us to clean the canal that was fifty hundred dollars a day? Something like that?
I think it was.
Thousand fifty, yeah. Uh, it was, uh, a regional water pool, so. Around ten, one, ten, five, I think it was a thousand and fifty dollars a day. Could be fifteen.
That's just one machine.
I can't remember it, it was about right, that's about right.
One machine.
But he used two.
Yeah.
Several places.
Yes, sir.
So we end up paying for it, uh?
Well, we're still, we're still, got a couple more days on what we already have proved, so. He's already crossed over on Albany and it's almost out to George Street on the one that comes out by the boat exit.
So we probably had fifty thousand dollars just to clean that one canal out all the way through, roughly?
Pretty close.
You can make good time with that piece of machinery. It goes a lot faster than what you can imagine.
If we had our own, I believe it paid for itself.
Well, you could also got, you know, if we had our own, if the commission was willing to do it, and Mr. County Manager, you know, counties that border us or even the city, you know, we could do stuff for them and charge them.
Most of them around us already have them.
Pierce County's got one.
Pierce County has one, Brantley has one, Bacon County has one. So I've reached out to, um, to one of the other neighboring counties to see if we could go and look at what they've got. Talk to them and see what their pros and cons are.
Okay.
You got somebody that can run it?
Yes, sir.
I'm telling you, the work they've done so far, so far, Mr. Chairman's looked, I went by and looked at it today again. And it looks good.
What Commissioner Varner was talking about is the one that we could take, we're not mulching with it every day. You can take the bucket off, put a ditching bucket on it and use it in place of, of grayed off or whatever. So multiple uses for that same piece of work.
Be great. Be great.
Got a bunch of canal, they clean it out. One on Simmons Drive, they're, they're logging. They got that whole canal full of logs on, I want you to go down that road, look.
On Simmons?
Simmons. Simmons Drive, back there behind Simmons.
Is that our canal?
They in there cutting now.
That was at our canal.
I don't think it's-
Yes, our canal. Yeah.
Uh, I don't think so.
Goes across the Development Authority.
That'd be Development Authority, but we've never cleaned it. That, another one you're talking about, it comes out always at the corner.
Goes right by that left station?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we've never cleaned that, that's, uh,
We don't have a easement on it.
I don't know, we'll have to see. I'll check into that, I know where you're talking about. Almost right across from FedEx.
Right.
Right.
Across FedEx. It's back in water up on their parking lot.
The new FedEx?
Looked at Saturday after that rain, they were grumbling about it.
Want to check into it?
Need to look at it. Okay. How many, how many, have you got a price on that machine?
I do not. Not sure I'm working on that.
Okay. Do we have a machine that, that, a head could be put on?
That'd be a Honda.
That we buy a cat?
That cat, it doesn't have the right pump system on it. The Honda that we have, the older Honda, has that pump system on it to run an extra, with an extra valve and all the way on.
But it's got steel tracks on it, and you can't cross highways or nothing like that. How about that little mini excavator we got? How big is it?
It, you won't have it about ten feet in reach or anything.
Oh. We trade, we, do you actually use it pretty good bit?
But we could trade, if you wanted to trade that one in towards a bigger machine, that would be a possibility as well. If we have any rubber tracks on it, we could track, cause that, that will be coming in handy, you can dig it on the long side of the road. Now, we don't have a track on the highway.
All right. Thank you, Dave.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Okay. Get anything else?
No, sir, I don't.
I give a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion to second. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Meeting adjourned.